We allow a transfer of $3,000 into the line item 4630 for equipment repairs. A couple of weeks ago, the AC compressor at the discretion failed. We were informed that the warranty was just a few months out. They were able to replace part of the AC unit. They were unsure of the other compressor in the line that it would stay Friday. Last Friday, it failed. Actually, the Friday before, we were able to order another one with the same discount, but that line item for equipment repair will only, our budget is $3,500. So we're hoping to be able to transfer $2,000 to cover that.
How much is in that budget, do you know?
I don't know.
You said $3,500, right?
The equipment repair line is budgeted for the fiscal year of $3,500. So the $3,000 cost to repair the AC unit will put us at $500 starting balance for this year.
Okay, thank you.
I move we transfer $3,000 as requested by the manager, Amanda.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Singing none, all in favor of that motion? Two to zero.
Andy is on the line, Jim, if you can unmute him.
What's that?
Andy is on the line. Andy, there?
Oh, second. Item on the list.
I am here.
His attorney, the honorable Andrew Robinson. Go ahead, Andy.
Hi, I am taking up a little bit of your time to talk about a lateral transfer within District Three. As I think you know, we have a trial assistant vacancy in the Franklin County office. We actually did go through an interview process, a hiring process, where we had a representative from the commissioners' office, members of my staff, and we went through a series of interviews, but we were not able to find somebody that we thought was going to meet the needs of the Franklin office. At the same time, I have somebody who is on a grant, working in the Andersgagen office in the capacity of a trial assistant. She's been there a year, has prior paralegal experience of about 18 years, and is interested in transferring to Franklin County's office. So knowing that we had that need, knowing that she would be able to walk through the door and is already familiar with the procedures and the process that we use with our cases, I thought I'd come to you and see if I could get your permission to authorize that transfer.
How much money are you talking, Andy?
Oh, she would come in as a, I guess we didn't, I just, whatever a trial assistant would come in with her experience, I didn't actually go and look at the pay scale. It would just be, I was more looking to see if, conceptually, it was something you'd be interested in.
This is Terry. And Andy, and I support anything you wanted to do, so if you think this is the best way, most efficient method, then I would support it.
And I'm okay with it, Andy, I just, usually we transfer a dollar amount, not a whatever I want amount.
Makes perfect sense. No, I agree with that. I think we have a good pay scale in place, and I can get that information back to you so that you know what we're talking about.
Because what you're looking to do is take surplus money from this year you have in your budget and transfer it to next year. Is that what you're looking to do? Am I missing something here?
No, just to replace.
That's, I...
Go ahead, Andy.
I simply want to hire somebody to work in Franklin County who is currently working in Andersgagen County, in the exact same position. So I just want to fill a position.
Sue?
You're essentially...
Sue Black has a comment, Andy.
Well, if you don't get lateral transfer in our personnel policy, I don't know how that fits into a lateral transfer from another county. It says a lateral transfer is a transfer of employee from a job in a particular pay grade to another job in the same pay grade with no change in hourly rate. And there's a 30-day saying, the employee can't send that. I mean, the department can't send that employee back if it doesn't work out. I think we're going down a slippery slope with that lateral transfer of people from another county into our county.
But it doesn't specify the difference, does it, in that contract?
Well, it's our policy.
Yeah, it's our personnel policy.
I think you're right. We would be setting a precedent. I think you may get explicit to Andy's situation where it's the same district that he represents.
Yeah, that's what he's saying.
I disagree. I think you should go with that.
It is interesting, because I think maybe using the term lateral transfer, I think Sue may rightly point out there's something specific to the Franklin County office. But because I am a district, which was, you know, the construct occurred with the legislature back in '76, and we do have a statute that says, you know, the county commissioners will provide the district attorney, the county, of the county sufficient funds for clerk hire. So it almost seems to contemplate the district's existence, although we, clearly, we are so meshed together, and the way we have functioned in the past, I've always come and talked to you about employees, and I consider the employees to be a part of the county. So maybe the best way to make this request is to not trigger language like lateral. It's lateral for me, because I have a district, I have three offices, and one of them, I have an employee who's doing the exact same thing that she would do perfectly well in another, and the funding for her position, because it's a grant and the current economic climate, you know, is under a cloud, and I have a need. So it's something where I think of it as a lateral, but maybe from your perspective, it is, I would like to do a new hire, but I have, I've already gone through the application process, I've done the interviewing, we were not successful, and now I have a candidate that is just perfectly situated to step in and begin work. So I respect Sue Black's observations. It does not jive perfectly with just looking at the Franklin County policy manual, because it involves another one of my offices within the district.
So there must be...
Go ahead.
What's her name, Andy?
Stacy Dutil.
So you're requesting that we authorize you to hire Stacy Dutil? That's what we're talking about, right? The lateral thing confused me. I'm used to, at the end of the year here, transferring from one account, that's why I was confused. I move that we authorize the district attorney to hire Stacy Dutil.
That easily? I'll second that motion. But don't they have their own policy though, Andy? Personnel policy?
Where, in Anders?
Yes.
They do, but she's leaving Andersgagen, right? She's coming to Franklin. So it'll be Franklin County's policy that's going to govern her employment. Her hiring, the rate she's hired at, will be governed by Franklin County's pay scale. So, and I'm happy to, before we officially do anything, come back and make sure you're aware of what that pay scale would be to address Charlie's concerns.
This is enlarging your office by one person?
No.
Well, it's filling a void. I have a vacancy that has been there throughout the entirety of the COVID-19 response. You'll recall, the court shut down. Certain, it kept essential functioning, but essentially stopped all public interaction. So the workload lessened, and we tried to interview and find somebody, nothing matched up perfectly. So we have been in a holding pattern. I essentially said, look, let's write out the remainder of the COVID-19 shutdown, let's see what's happening. The court has now started reopening, the workload is starting to pick up speed, so I do need to fill this vacancy now. It's a position that has, that already existed, has existed for years, and now I'm just looking to fill it.
Okay. Are you through telling us, or do you want us to vote?
I'm going to just be quiet now. I can't see your faces. I reached the point where you're looking at your watch.
Andy, perhaps in the future, you could get out of your political hat here and just come and ask us what you want, instead of making it so confusing to us, Franklin County folks, okay? I don't care if they come from Caribou. If you found a person to fill the duty, that's what matters, not where they came from, or whether they're moving from one place or another. If she wants to move here, we'd love to have her here, pay our taxes, and enjoy our lovely county. So I would suggest, in the future, maybe you just, don't give us these confusing words. I'm just joking, giving you a hard time. I haven't heard any of your jokes today. Usually tell us jokes.
Yeah. Is there any further discussion on this matter?
No.
All those in favor of the motion? So two to zero, Andy.
Thank you, Andy.
Have a good day.
I'm perfectly willing to ramble on for another half hour.
We know that.
Okay, we'll let you get on to your next agenda.
All right. Item number three.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Andy. Lieutenant John Donald Newhigh.
I'm probably not going to need it, I'm terribly loud. We just need to, I have a request to hire Ginger Fails from, she's a long-time, part-time cook, to the 32 and a half hour full-time cook position. She's been with us a number of years, I'm not sure off the top of my head, like five. Does a good job, and this would help us fill in a lot of the gaps in the schedule that we're having a hard time filling in the kitchen due to lack of interest in the part-time position.
How do you spell the last name?
Fails. F-A-I-L-S.
Okay, I'm doing that for the...
Press.
The press was listening. Ginger Fails. I move we accept the recommendation of Lieutenant Donald for hiring of Ginger Fails.
Great idea, you're on.
Second? Great idea, it's 15:04 now, aren't we?
At 15:04.
Second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion?
Thank you.
Signify two to zero. Have a good day. We're going to skip the executive sessions, Julie, and move on to clerk's report. We have a clerk's report. We're citing the minutes of last meeting.
Yep. I move we accept the clerk's report.
Second that. Any discussion? All in favors, accepting the clerk's report, two to zero. Treasurer's report.
You have a few warrants to sign, I think it's...
Done those.
And I want to let you know that we have set a date for the auditors to come, put it at FY21 audit, Vanessa's dot com, the week of August 17.
Okay, all right.
And what's the PILT payment? What's that?
Oh, sorry. The taxes. We see that in the year.
Oh, I'm sorry. I move we accept the treasurer's report and the PILT report payment.
The bill payment was $27,000.
Second that.
Seventeen thousand six hundred nine ninety-nine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion? Two to zero. Thank you. Item number three, consideration of FY21 county budget.
Do we have the...
Got to bring a look at these. The jail is up. I got sidetracked. There you go. That's the jail. So to summarize, the only changes that are reflected in the final budget as approved by the budget committee last week was the reduction, let's start with the commissioners, the reduction of the commissioners' annual salary from $12,000 down to $10,000, and also I offered to eliminate the new employee position for the commissioners' office. So that line item, I'm okay with that for this year. So I guess the only, if you're okay with that, I mean, I'm okay with that. So the only issue on that budget would be the commissioners' salaries.
So there was, what was the other item? Was it $7,000 you recommended taking out? $7,000?
Yeah.
For the time clock?
Was that a question?
No, deputy, yeah, that's the new EE hire.
So that was reduced to zero.
And that was your recommendation?
Yes, yep. I'm fine with that.
So their budget committee was $124,171.
The time clock was also removed?
It's not in this?
Yeah, I didn't know, I asked which budget that was in. I don't have a copy of the budget in front of me.
Is it in the commissioners?
The time clock is in the treasurer's.
All right.
No, I don't know where it is.
Well, let's find it.
Look at either 1020 or 1025.
1020 or 1025?
Yeah, it went down and down to $17,000.
Yeah, it's in the treasurer's.
Okay.
All right, so I would make a motion regarding the change made by the budget committee on commissioners' line 1020. I would say that four years ago, when we had the big budget problem with the loss of revenue in Jay, I met with, we met with the commissioners, but the commissioners agreed at that time to go to $10,000. But I'm not supporting that at this point, because I find the whole process very petty. I'd like to thank Travis Pond and Josh Bell and Tiffany Estabrook for this, what they've done, because since I've been here, they were there when we initially sat down with the committee and actually had a working relationship. Judy Diaz wasn't there, but I appreciate what she's done. I'm very frustrated that this process has become political. When we made those tough choices back in 2016, I actually proposed that we go to $10,000 because I just felt we had to take our share. But at this point, it's just become a little game, and I'm tired of it. It's petty. So I would move that we send the budget back to them with the amount of $130,171, essentially putting back in the $6,000 that they took out for the commissioners.
I'll second that motion, because I too am disappointed. I think they did a few underhanded moves to achieve their goals, and we haven't found out yet who's in charge of the budget committee, so I'm not sure if it's the commissioners or some other entity, but I don't think this was done properly, so.
Yeah, I would also say, for the public who's listening to this, when we made these decisions on phasing out the program grants, we did this thoughtfully with the budget committee. I believe all the votes were either seven to two or eight to one, the budget committee. We had them, they came into the hearing room downstairs, where we, when our office is down there. We worked together, we understood we had a serious budget shortfall, we dealt with it. We get out of the Andersgagen council government, that saved us $4,500. We get out of the county commissioners', state county, the main county commissioners' association, that saved us almost $9,000. We made a lot of serious decisions, which is what you do. When you're elected to office, your job is to balance budgets and live within your means, and when you have a shortfall, you have to address it. We did that. And several of the committee members now are only there for one purpose. Half of them don't even pick up their books. They just go there and they want to put money back in the budget for whatever purpose they deemed is necessary. They don't have to raise their taxes, we have to. We're doing our job, and far as I'm concerned, if they want to sit down and talk to the commissioners, I mean, the $10,000 is not, I don't think it's, I don't think it matters either way, I don't think anybody runs to this office with $10,000. But it's just irritating to me that they would be so petty, because they didn't get their way. And fortunately, the actions taken by Commissioner Brand and myself have saved taxpayers of state, this county, at least $800,000 to $1 million in the last four years. So I'm proud of that. I wish that we go back to the days of having a working relationship with the budget committee, but until they get new people there, or people who don't have an agenda, we're going to be stuck with what we have. And we'll have to have this continuous battle between the commissioners, whoever's sitting here, and the budget committee, because they think that, they don't have any problem raising, putting money in the budget, because they're not paying for it. They don't have to raise their taxes, they don't have to answer the voters, which is what we have to do, so.
One of the budget committee members made the comment that, so we're saving $200,000 or $300,000 a year, he personally would rather pay more money. So I haven't had any taxpayer tell me they wanted to pay more taxes, it was just the opposite. And I might add, Commissioner Barker was here that night that the budget committee decided to do that, and he was not happy at all. And he said he would not vote for that, so. Now you realize he's not here to cast his vote.
And for those who don't know, he's got some health issues, but he'll be back hopefully soon. So that's...
Any further discussion? Singing none, all in favor of that motion, so signify two to zero. Don't know how that works out.
The other one is treasure.
Item number four, appointment to Phillips.
No, 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 we got one more budget. The time clock.
It's the treasurer's.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
No, I didn't mean to be rude.
So that reflects the elimination of the time clock, and also your recommendation to reduce the treasurer's annual salary to $12,000, and reduction of the pre-aid spending that was where changes were made by the budget committee.
Yeah. And I would, I would just, I'd move that we accept, I just think we should accept what they did. I could be petty and just, and vote against it, but I'm not convinced we need a time clock at this point, so I'm willing to accept this. But I want to make it clear that, there again, we could have been, we could have sat in a room and had a discussion about this, but I can't see the support for the time clock, so I'm willing to let it go.
Okay.
Do we have to move to accept the county commit budget as we decided? How do we do that?
No, that's good, just that one change, and we'll have to meet again to find what is...
Okay, I'm for that too.
And we're going to have to do the tax assessment as well.
Okay. And we'll know what the surplus is and what we're going to transfer. Okay, perfect, thank you.
But you will see the estimated revenues, Charlie, that we had talked about previously in your budget package when we get down to you. I did do the $139,000 from the surplus as recommended, $100,000 plus $39,000 to cover the capital.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you.
That conclude the budget.
That's it today.
Okay. So can we move on to appointments to Phillips, Avon, Madrid, Michael Wood?
They voted to restore the commissioners, so that's...
We can leave it.
Do you want to make a motion just to accept the rest of the budget as?
As?
I move we accept the other adjustments to the budget.
Just to make it have an order of action.
Okay, I move that we accept the other items within the budget.
I second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, so two to zero. Okay?
So I had a phone call, and there's a vacancy on the Phillips, Avon, Madrid, Michael Wood committee. Gina Robey has been a member in the past, and apparently is willing to continue to serve. So if you would make that recommendation?
Gina Robey, yeah?
I'd so move Gina Robey as an appointment to the committee.
Second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion? Two to zero. Okay?
And Steve's here for cruise bids.
Cruise bids.
I have copies of the specs that I did email to you, and they are hard copy as well.
Yeah, basically, I'd just like to put out the cruise bids and have them do it back there for August 4th, for your meeting then. And I'm doing it a little bit differently this year, I'm just looking for a price of about $150,000, police package, and a interceptive police package, not looking for exact how many number of cruise is going to get, because we know what the price is going to be, and for the half skyrocket on the interceptive. I am a little bit trade in this area.
So you had trade-ins?
We do have trade-ins.
Okay.
And without flying on your aircraft.
Oh, low mileage vehicles too, so anybody's hearing.
So you've got four, you reached out to four different companies?
What's that?
You reached out to four different companies, looks like?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Good, good.
So I move we accept the recommendation by the sheriff's department for the cruise bid specifications.
Second that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor of that motion, so signify two to zero. Okay. Is that in the new business?
That is. Unless you want to take up the risk pool, I mean, I have that to ask in executive session.
Yeah?
You have the post settlement that has been negotiated in front of you today, which are the same terms that we have discussed previously in executive session.
Okay.
On the basis of our attorney for that, if you would accept on behalf of the commissioners that agreement and sign it, we can then have our attorneys pass that back to the risk pool, and they'll have to vote and act upon it, and then it has to be filed in the court before it becomes a final settlement.
Okay. So we don't, it'll still stay private until, so we don't have to be in executive session?
They would like to have your signature on it today to show the joint support of these settlement that has been negotiated.
Yeah, that's fine, this is what we agreed to, yeah. All right, I move we sign the...
Agreement.
Sign the agreement.
I'll second that.
A little bit to our attorney. With a check, if needed.
Yes, and hold that in escrow.
Yep, okay.
All in favor of that motion? Two to zero.
Full sign up before we go.
Now, we're going to need to have that signed and notarized, so if you want to move to the rest of the meeting, then I'll have a notary come up. Before we have notarized.
Do we have Mr. Manza here? Is he on the, he's not on the agenda? So, but they must have an issue, because I see he's brought somebody with him.
No, this is on the G O bids.
Okay, in the G O, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's hard to see with the masks on, who's who.
Yeah, okay.
Everybody's in the center.
All right, so all businesses, detention centers?
Yes, detention center, RFPs. It was brought to my attention via email a week ago, that there was a second bidder that was interested in the substance abuse, mental health bid, and we followed back and checked our security footage, and we had thought that bid was received late, but it certainly was not. It was on Friday at around 11:00, exactly as bird attention, we did receive that. So I did call our attorney this week, she is recommending that you definitely open the bid. She would like to have the bid specs, our attorney would, and both of the bid proposals for her review, and then she can make a recommendation on how we should proceed, but at least this bid should be recognized and opened today.
So they were last minute, but not late?
Oh, it was all within the time period, okay.
Perfect, will we want to get a...
Do we need to open first, or just...
Yeah, open, yes. Yeah.
We can do that.
Yeah, it's still sealed.
I don't remember the winning bid, the number, I can't...
It was $51,000 for one year, and you actually accepted a two-year...
Two-year bid.
$102,000.
There must be a number here somewhere. You probably know, which page do I find the number?
Not off the top of my head, but it should be on there.
Okay. The last page, thank you.
Okay, just for the record, you probably ought to state who the page is on, that's what I'm thinking.
Last page is its license.
That's on the very last page, your proposal.
And it's, there's insurance on it, it's a creek, okay.
So what's the name of the A?
I see a bid of $38,064. Is that the one you're referring to?
Yes.
$38,064, zero cents.
$38,064.
So that is significantly lower. So I'll do as we were asked.
So I'll collect that, and submit what had been previously submitted, and I will move it to our attorney. She's going to try to turn this around as quickly as she can, and as soon as we have a decision or a recommendation, we will schedule a meeting.
Yeah, and we apologize for the fact that the bid...
Yeah, we didn't see that.
Was in front of us, and I think we need the attorney to tell us what to do next this week.
Yes, exactly.
Because we didn't, we don't want to break any rules, we want to do what's right, so. Thank you.
I hear you.
Can I also, on the award two, there was, the one that the RFP went out, it was a one-year RFP, and the award was awarded two years. Any justification for that?
Pretty consistent, what we... Pretty consistent with what we've done in the past. If people, if, if somebody guarantees the same price second year, we've pretty much done that. But you're right. I probably did, I don't know if you're right or not, but if you say it went out for one year, it's fine. But since I've been here, if the, if the person who bids is willing to extend that for another year, we've just, we've allowed them to do that. Because generally, it goes out every year, so, but...
Particularly where it was the only bid.
Right. So, yeah.
And it was a low bid, so I mean, until now.
We'll see what the attorney says.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Are you willing to accept the same offer?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. We'll wait for the attorney's...
Yeah.
Revelation.
Yeah. Okay. Any other old business? I don't see anything on the agenda.
You have...
This lady is?
I do not. We will have to do eventually the tax commitment. I can actually prepare that because either way, $2,000 is not going to make any difference for the tax commitment. But as soon as we get that on recognition for the RFP, I assume, we'll try to do that next week. I'll try to turn that around really quickly. Then that way, we can do the tax commitments.
Wouldn't we have to wait for the budget committee to?
Yeah, we're going to have to have a final number. Yeah.
Yeah. I would...
As soon as they could probably meet pretty quickly, maybe this week.
Yeah. I would also like to at least get a sense of, because of Corona and where we're at, I'd like to get a sense of how much, and we will know this, how much is actually unexpended. I mean, if we're, if we're dumping hypothetically $100,000 extra in the surplus, then maybe we would raise that $139,000 to a higher number.
We could.
Because several years ago, the auditor said, it's easy to do a couple hundred thousand. And we haven't because we don't, we're conservative here. But if we, if we dump, I don't know how, I have no idea what is being transferred from...
Well, let me give you the preliminary numbers, but I think the goal is to try to keep the mill rate as close as we can to last year, assuming that we are objective.
Okay. Right.
And obviously, from year to year, some towns go up in valuation, some go down.
Absolutely.
You know, we can still have a flat mill rate in towns. Some are going to see a decrease, and some are going to see an increase.
Yeah. I mean, if the, if the number is not great, then I'm not concerned. But if we're dumping $100,000 into surplus, for example, I don't know. I know last year, unfortunately, the police department couldn't, it's not here now, but I know there was a problem with filling positions, so we've got, you know, under the sheriff's department. So there may be some unexpected revenue there that we, that we didn't need, unfortunately, because we couldn't find anybody. So I just want to, at least before I vote, know that we aren't banking a bunch of money and then asking people for more.
Do you plan to do the commitment, August, the next meeting? Well, we'll see how quickly we can get the RFP issue resolved, how completely the budget can be. Right now, it's up to me. But I'll try to... I could have a complete budget, but we can do the taxes.
Right. Right. Yeah. Sure. All right. Good.
But I'll get that information to you as soon as I can.
Thank you. Well, no, you've got a lot to do, I'm sure.
All right. Good. So is that for all business? That takes care of it? So we can go into executive session? Is that next in line?
So this will be the end of our meeting?
Yes, if you want to take a quick break, and I'll have a notary come up so we can get that document.
Okay. Just, just take a five-minute break then, or is that enough?
Yeah.
How about a 10? How long, how fast you going to walk?
Okay, so we had the documents notarized. Now we go ahead and entertain the motion, I guess, from the executive session. We need to do it individually, of course.
Yeah, okay.
We're not going to do the risk pool one, right? We're done with that?
No, we didn't need that.
So we only have one executive session?
Yeah. Duties and responsibilities, correct?
Yeah.
4056A.
I move we, one, MRSA, 4056A, personal matter duties and responsibilities. Excuse me. Job duties and responsibilities.
Road agent.
Road agent. Right.
Second that motion.
Okay.
That was a motion, right?
And that said, uh...
10:55.
10:55.
You just tested the man during the...
Line unmuted.
Okay, we're back in session at 11:21.
Okay. I would move that we accept the county road commissioners' resignation effective September 1st, that we would advertise for a new road agent with a salary of $10,000 a year.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion on, any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor of that motion, two to zero? Thank you very much. And I believe that concludes our meeting for today, or?
Timmy wanted to address both of you, I do believe, in executive session?
Timmy? Okay.
Okay. So we need to go into executive session?
Again?
Yes.
Pursuant to?
4056A. Job responsibilities, duties, DNA.
So moved?
Okay. I'll second that, and I would just notify the press, notify the press for that knowledge that we won't be, all we'll be doing after this is a journey, so...
Yes.
Want to hang around, find, otherwise, we're just going to...
We're going back into executive session for you guys.